Good afternoon, everyone. On the occasion of the 88th Annual General Meeting of the BIS, it gives me a great pleasure to welcome you all to this session on key financial regulatory developments. Of course, here at the BIS, we are extremely proud to work so closely with standard-setting bodies. I'm very glad to have my colleagues, the Secretaries Generals of the FSB, the Basel Committee, the IIS, the CPMI, and IADI here with us today. And I am, of course, particularly delighted to welcome Paul Andreou, Secretary-General of Iosco, for the first time in this gathering. So thank you very much, Paul, to have come to Basel for this occasion. So this completes actually quite a formidable panel of standard-setting bodies and makes today's session certainly a unique opportunity to exchange views in holistic and comprehensive manner on relevant regulatory developments in different financial areas. However, of course, given the time constraints and also the rich agenda of the different standard-setting bodies, we have decided to take a different approach this year than in previous years. So rather than taking a quick scan over all the different work streams and priorities of the six standard setters, we have decided to focus on two key topical issues facing all the standard setters, namely implementation, implementation of standards, and technology. So certainly with the completion of most of the global regulatory reforms, the international financial regulatory agenda is certainly shifting from policymaking, standard-setting, to more implementation. Of course, the term "implementation" means different meanings. I think at least it comprises like three different types of activities. First is the monitoring of the adoption of these standards by different jurisdictions. Second, the analysis of the impact of the implemented standards and also identification of possible unintended consequences. And finally, also the promotion of sound supervisory practices that will help optimize actually the effect of the adoption of the new standards. As we will hear, I think all the standard setters are more or less involved on the three domains, of course, with different emphasis. On technology, as we all know, the developments are extremely rapid and potentially disruptive for the functioning of the financial industry. From a regulatory perspective, of course, a key challenge is to understand how technological developments could actually impact the delivery of financial services and how this could actually have an effect on financial stability, consumer protection, and other policy objectives. This understanding, of course, absolutely needed in order to be able to identify the inadequate and proportionate regulatory response. We are, of course, we are already observing some policy actions taken in different jurisdictions in relation to technology. We have been actually some jurisdictions adopting regulation of the fintech businesses. Certainly, some action is taking place as well in what respects cyber resilience, crypto assets, and other tech-related issues. However, I think it's fair to recognize that we are still at the infancy of the regulatory debate and that, of course, much more analysis and also change of experiences is required actually in order to give sort of a consistent and sufficiently comprehensive policy response to what is actually happening already in the marketplace. At the Financial Stability Institute, we aim at supporting efforts to better understand these extremely important issues through our activities and in particular through our policy work and the associated FSI insights on policy implementation. Certainly, much of our work is now pretty much concentrated on this policy implementation area and also we are increasingly covering issues that had to do with the challenges and the opportunities of technological developments for financial sector oversight. So in this session, we will hear from all the speakers on both topics. I think the structure of the session, we have agreed, is the following. We'll give first 10 minutes to each member of the panel for their initial remarks on those two issues. Then we will directly open the floor for general comments, questions from the audience, and then they will reply to those comments or add additional remarks if they feel appropriate. So that's the plan for today's session. So now, for me, it's a great pleasure to invite Paul Andreou, Secretary-General of Iosco, to deliver his initial remarks.
Thank you, Paul. Fernando, thanks very much, and thank you for the kind invitation to be here. It is, as Fernando said, my first time, and I am very much looking forward to spending a few minutes with you and listening to comments and questions that you may have for us about some of the things that we're doing at Iosco. So what I wanted to do was spend the first couple of minutes talking about how we look at implementation monitoring. Because, as Fernando said, this is a key component to any standard-setting body. We can set standards, but at the end of the day, are they being implemented? And if they're being implemented, how well are they being implemented? And if they are being well implemented, what's the impact? And so as I look at the work that we do from an assessment of the standards that we do, I really divide it into two components, two areas. First is the work that we do together with other standard-setting bodies and other international organizations, and work that we do solely on our own. So let me talk for a moment about the implementation work that we do with our colleagues that are sitting with me on the panel this afternoon. So first, we work very closely with the FSB on something that they have with respect to the Implementation Monitoring Network. And this is a focus on conducting a yearly survey where we look at critical areas that fall within the ambit of securities regulators. These are areas like hedge funds, securitizations, credit rating agencies, things that are important to the G20 reforms, but they fall within the remit of Iosco. And so on a yearly basis, we work on the survey. We do the analysis together with the FSB in a very collaborative way. The other standard-setting body that we spend a very significant amount of time working together with on implementation issues is CPMI. And I'm not going to spend any time on that because I know Morton will talk a little bit about that in his remarks. But suffice it to say that, given the complex financial world that we find ourselves in, these international partnerships are becoming more and more critical and I think will continue to become critical as we assess where we are next year, the year after, and the year after that. So that's what we do, I would say, internationally. What are we doing and what's critical with respect to the G20 reforms that we're doing at Iosco? And there, I want to focus on two things. First is around money markets and money market funds. Many would say that with, in many respects, money market funds were ground zero of the great financial crisis. Because when prime reserve broke the buck, this was perhaps the beginning of the end when it came to the financial crisis. So in 2012, Iosco put in some reforms with respect and some recommendations with respect to how to look at money market funds. Three years later, we looked at how were these recommendations being implemented and found that many of the recommendations weren't being implemented for one reason or another. There were legitimate reasons in some cases. In other cases, it was just a lack of will, et cetera. So starting in 2016, we've done some implementation monitoring on a yearly basis now. And that's exactly what we're doing with respect to the money market funds in terms of how are these reforms, how are these recommendations being implemented country by country? And in fact, in November of last year, we actually published the analysis and the methodology on how we actually look at whether the recommendations are being implemented, trying to be transparent, trying to demonstrate exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we need to get from where we are to where we need to be. So that's what we do on implementation. We do a number of additional things through what we call an assessment committee. That's a permanent standing committee or a permanent board committee of Iosco. Most of the things that that committee does is look at things that are unique to Iosco, not necessarily directly related to the G20 reforms, but they play a critical role in how standards are being implemented and they play an important role in how we interact with our colleagues, not only within the Iosco membership, but with our other standard-setting body colleagues. So that's on implementation monitoring. Let me spend a minute on financial innovation, financial technology, and then I want to say a word about cybersecurity. So when I think about financial innovation, financial technology, a huge area, it's, you know, as I like to term it, it's like trying to get your arms wrapped around this beast called financial technology is like trying to nail Jell-O to a tree. It just can't be done. And so to the extent that we can make a difference, we had to find a way or we're looking for ways to not just do what everybody else is doing, but find a way to make a real difference. So what we've done and what we're in the early stages of doing is we've formed something we're calling a fintech network. And the idea of the fintech network is to monitor developments in terms of what's actually happening in the regulatory technology arena, the supervisory technology arena, and the regulatory technology arena to understand better how technology is being used both from a market perspective but also from a regulatory and supervision perspective. And the idea there is to continue to foster cooperation and see where the gaps are and whether there needs to be policy responses from an Iosco point of view with respect to how technology is unfolding and being used in the marketplace today. So we're in the early stages of this, but the idea is to look at issues in the early days of first just sharing experiences. How is technology actually being used in various jurisdictions? From there, starting to look at what about the use of regulatory sandboxes or innovation labs or innovation hubs, things that we're seeing more and more and more around the world? Are there lessons learned from these hubs, from these labs, from these innovation centers that we can learn from collectively that do require some sort of policy response? It may not be any policy response, but the idea is to understand how this world is working and where we as securities regulators should and play a role. Ideally, then, we'll get into some very specific issues, perhaps around peer-to-peer lending, perhaps around application programming interfaces, things along these lines. But it's early days. We don't really know exactly where this is going to lead. But the idea, at least in the short run, is to become much more facile in the language of what's happening in the innovation arena so that then we can talk about these issues in a very cohesive and a very knowledgeable way. That's where we think we bring some value add. That's where we think we can make a difference. One last area I want to just spend a moment on is around cybersecurity. It's an issue that is affecting all of us in one way or another and it will continue to affect us next year, the year after, and the year after that. So people came to us, many of our members, others said, "Why doesn't Iosco come out with a set of standards with respect to cybersecurity, cyber resilience, whatever term you want to use?" And our response to that was, "Where's the value add in that?" There are a lot of great standards that already exist out there in the world, one of which frankly came from some work that we did with CPMI when it comes to financial market infrastructures. ISO has great standards, the G7 has great standards, the NIST framework in the United States has great standards. But the issue for us is, why should we add to all this great body of work when the real issue is, how is this work being, I mean, how are these standards actually being implemented and used? And so that's what we're doing, is we're taking a look across the Iosco membership and saying, "Are you implementing the NIST standard? Are you implementing ISO? Are you implementing CPMI Iosco? If not, why not? And are there gaps that need to be filled? And if there are gaps that need to be filled, that's when Iosco will step in." Until and unless we do that analysis, all we're going to do is become one of the additional standards that someone will potentially cite to, but not use. Use and implementation are critical in this arena, and that's where we're spending our time. That's where we think we can make a difference. Let me end it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed, Paul. So our second speaker is Morton Beck, head of the Security Committee on Payments and Market.
Good afternoon to everyone, and thank you, Fernando, for inviting me to participate in this panel. This is my second time, so I'm much more experienced than Paul. So this was actually a very big year for the CPMI. So we actually expanded our membership with three new members, the central banks of Argentina, Spain, and Indonesia. And this was the first expansion since 2009. And now, the committee includes all the G20 countries and 40% of our members actually come from emerging market economies. And I think it better aligns us with the international regulatory framework and also the other standard setters. And we then also get a broader set of experiences to draw on in our work. So we're very pleased with that. So as was mentioned, we are a standard setter for financial market infrastructure and our key standards are the principles for financial market infrastructures which we issued in 2012 together with Iosco. And it's principle-based, there's 24 principles. I'm not going to go through each of them, every one of them. And then there's five responsibilities for authorities. But standards are a bit like gardens. They need to be nurtured, so from time to time, we issue further guidance on our standards. So we did, last year in 2017, we did some guidance on resiliency and recovery for CCPs. And in 2016, as Paul just mentioned, we issued further guidance on cyber resilience for financial market infrastructures. But as Paul also mentioned, if standards are not being implemented, then they're probably not being very useful. So we do a lot of looking at implementation monitoring. And there's been a lot of good progress, as this slide shows. It looks at the self-assessment that the different jurisdictions that we monitor do in terms of their PFMI implementation. And the green ones are the ones that have fully implemented the PFMI except for something called trade repositories, which is a new form of financial market infrastructures. But there's some that are still only have partially implemented the PFMI and we are working hard to ensure that there's full and consistent implementation across the globe. But we don't always use standards, and that's not the only way that you can reduce risk or increase efficiencies. So this year, we also issued a strategy to protect against what we call wholesale endpoint security. By that, we really mean some of the cyber threats and incidents we have seen in the area of wholesale payments. Some of you might remember there was an incident at the Central Bank of Bangladesh a couple of years ago where hackers managed to siphon off, I believe, $81 million from an account at the Federal Reserve Bank of New York. And recently, there was also an incident in Mexico that was widely reported in the media. So what this strategy tries to do is to try and basically provide seven steps that you should take in order to protect the endpoint security in this wholesale payments ecosystem. I'm going to refrain from going through each and every one of them, but they are a way of establishing a coherent framework around endpoint security. And so this strategy is very important for central banks because central banks are also operators of their own wholesale payment security. Most of them run what's called a real-time cross-sellment system. And the central banks that are part of the BIS family have all committed to adopting this strategy and we will be monitoring progress throughout 2018 and 2019. So CPMI is also a forum for analysis of everything that has to do with payments. And I'm just going to highlight two of the things that we have done over the last year. So there's all this talk about new technology and how that is affecting the world. But we actually took a look at the old technology, the oldest technology for payments, which is cash. And so what this graph that we, that appeared based on our analysis in The Economist shows is kind of like the development in cash in circulation as well as the value of card payments. And everything is measured in percentage of GDP. And so, and then we have two panels, one for advanced economies and one for emerging market economies. And then the arrows shows the development for 2007 to 2016. And as you can see, almost every country, there was an increase in cash in circulation as a percentage of GDP. And for most, all countries, there were also an increase in the value of card payments. And we take card payments as a proxy for electronic payments. I think we were actually expecting that because all payments are going electronic, that we would actually see a decrease in cash in circulation. But that's clearly not the case. Most of that is related to people holding more cash as a store value. But there are some outliers, and the one that everybody's talking about is, of course, Sweden. In Sweden, cash is more or less on the verge of disappearing. And so the CPMI have been looking very closely at these developments and especially in the context of what people like to discuss, cryptocurrencies or even central bank digital currencies. So that takes me to the final slide. So what is this central bank cryptocurrency or digital currency all about? So we were struggling a lot with that last year and we actually had a hard time explaining that to governors. So we tried to come up with a taxonomy to explain where Bitcoin or central bank digital currency fits in. So just, this is a taxonomy of money. We think there's four key properties of money. One, that it can be issued by the central bank or not. It can either be physical or electronic. It can either be widely accessible to all. And then finally, and that Paul also mentioned this, is the peer-to-peer element. Can you transfer money without the help of a trusted third party? So that's the peer-to-peer element. And you can see, we can actually fit Bitcoin into this diagram if you can find it. There's this famous Bitcoin symbol. But that's not the same as saying that Bitcoin is a good form of money, right? You can fit it into the diagram, but we want to stress that we don't think Bitcoin is a good form of money. And in particular, coming from the CPMI, we actually think Bitcoin is a very poor form of payment system. And then in the center, that's where you have all forms of central bank money. We have reserves, we have, and then we have the new forms, which are either accounts for all, that's what we call deposit currency accounts. So the central bank would basically be providing accounts for all. And then we have two types of central bank digital currency or cryptocurrency. And there's one that's only for banks, that's the one we call wholesale. And then there's one for general use, that's the one we call retail. So this is what we've been spending the last year on.
Thank you very much, Morton. Now, let's move on to Bitcoins, Secretary-General of the Deposit Commission, Bank and Supervision.
Thank you, Fernando. I'm really pleased to be here this afternoon and particularly pleased to be talking about something other than Basel III, which if you've been here for the last couple of years, you've heard me drone on about Basel III and the floor and finalizing the Basel Committee's response to the crisis. So, but there it is in the first bullet, Basel III finalized in December 2017. So it's inevitable, whenever I talk about the work of the Basel Committee, to talk about Basel III. But the context in which I'll discuss it today is implementation. I'll also talk about some of the important work we're doing now that the rules have been finalized and, for the most part, they have been. I'll talk about the work we're doing to kind of step back, look at the rules, what have we got in place, and are we content with how the rules are working? There is still some, as I've put here, some narrow, limited policy work. There'll always be some policy work for the Basel Committee, and I'll touch on a couple of areas there. And then I'll finish up with our work on the supervisory work, with an emphasis on supervisory work on fintech and cyber risk, cyber resilience. On implementation, so this is among the many lessons learned in the crisis, the lack of implementation, as Paul pointed out, or Morton said, "The rules are worthless if you don't put them in place." So our governing body, the Basel Committee reports to the central bank governors and the heads of supervision. Our governing body approved this program in 2012. And so far, we've made assessments of all of our members. There are 27 countries in the Basel Committee, 19 if you think of the European Union as a single block. So we've assessed all of our members' risk-based capital standards, their liquidity coverage ratio, the LCR standard, and we're in the process of looking at the other Basel III reforms. And this is the Regulatory Consistency Assessment Program. And think of it this way, most of you are familiar with the IMF World Bank Financial Sector Assessment Program, the FSAP. We go to jurisdiction to jurisdiction. We look at the Basel global standard, the minimum standard, as I always like to stress. We compare it with the rules, regulations, laws in place at the local level. And it's almost a line-by-line comparison, the global standard with the local rules. We look for deviations, departures from the global standard. If there are departures or deviations, are they material? To what extent are they material? We assess grades, compliant, largely compliant, materially non-compliant or non-compliant. And importantly, we publish these reports. And I think the program has been tremendously successful. We also follow up with each jurisdiction. If there have been deviations from the global standard, we go back, we follow up and look to see if there have been any follow-up at the country level to address the deviations that we identified. So we continue with that program. That'll be going on for the next couple of years. There's still the net stable funding ratio, large exposures regime, the leverage ratio, everything that we just finalized in December 2017. But this, as we like to say, this is an important step, an important measure to ensure that the Basel rules are implemented full-time, consistently. So that's just one element, these country assessments that we do, that's one element. We also look to see, even before we get to that point, are the rules in place? Has the country consulted, published a consultation? And so we check the status from start to finish. Some of the work we're doing now is really to ensure that the rules are operational. Are they implementable? Are they supervisable? Do supervisors understand the rules? And how do we do that? We engage regularly, of course, at the supervisory level within the Basel Committee, but also outside of the Basel Committee membership. We engage closely with non-Battle Committee supervisors. We engage closely with the industry and the trade associations, academics, all interested parties. We look at frequently asked questions. We develop responses to those FAQs and we publish them. Again, the intent is to make sure the rules are understood and the rules are operational and implementable. We also will start publishing technical amendments where there are oversights, inconsistencies in the rules when we publish them. Something that I think will be of interest by the end of the year or the first quarter of next year, based on everything we've done. And there's been, there's been a lot, we acknowledge that. And there's been, there's been a lot, we acknowledge that. There are still elements of Basel I that countries are using, there are still elements of Basel II that are in effect, and there's Basel III. And so how does this all fit together? It's, yeah, there's a lot out there. We're consolidating the framework, we'll publish, redesign our website, publish the consolidated framework for capital and liquidity and all the other Basel Committee standards on our website by the end of the year. And I think this will make it far more accessible, far more digestible, let's say. I'm often asked, what do I see? What are my concerns these days? And I've listed two here, bumps in the road. One of them is dilution. As I mentioned a moment ago, Basel Committee produces minimum standards. It's up to every country to adopt, or at least the countries in the Basel Committee to adhere to those standards, or go higher, take a more rigorous approach if national circumstances warrant. A lot of countries, a lot of countries do. Gold plate. Gold plate is sort of a pejorative. I don't view it that way. It's always been part of the Basel Committee framework, and it'll continue to be because there are differing resolution regimes, legal frameworks, supervisory practices, supervisory powers. So gold plating is not a bad thing. So if a country or jurisdiction goes below the Basel standard, well, we picked that up in the RCAP program or the RCAP assessments, and we published the results. That's one concern. The other concern is delay. I think when we first started this program, I think the standards were adopted in a robust manner. Countries, they consulted right away, they wrote the rules and the regulations, they put the rules in place. There has been some delays, and that's, some of it is understandable. IT systems at banks are strained. The IT pipeline is really for a lot of firms, putting our rules in place, it's really an issue. So there's at the bank side, but also on the supervisory, at the jurisdictional level, there continues to be quite a full pipeline for transposing Basel standards into national rules and regulations. That's also part of the delay. So I do understand that. Nevertheless, it is unfortunate. But really, what the more concerning factor, I think, is complacency. Or, you know, there's been this deceleration, there's been a lot of talk about deregulation. We are 10 years on from the crisis, and there's either a certain sense of, in some quarters, there's either a certain sense of myopia, nearsightedness, or there is this complacency like, you know, well, we had nothing to do with the global financial crisis, so we don't, you know, we don't really need to adopt all of these standards. Again, I point to the fact that Basel is a minimum standard. Okay, that's implementation. The other thing about the new standards, now is the time to take a step back. What have we done? The original objectives of all these new standards, are they being met? What's the quantitative impact? And the one thing I insist, and we have discussions with the banks and the trade associations and many others, we have this discussion all the time, let's have a discussion about the impact of the standards. But it's got to be based on data, it's got to be based on analysis and research. We've been collecting data as part of a Basel III monitoring process since 2011. We've been doing QIS assessments for a long, long time. So we've got, we've got lots of data and a lot of, excuse me, a lot of the work we're doing is based on that data. We're looking at, is the framework coherent? All these new standards, leverage ratio, liquidity coverage ratio, net stable funding ratio, new large exposure regime, we have buffers, we have surcharges, does everything fit together as we had expected them to? We've been looking at this for a couple of years, but now, again, with better data as the standards now come into force, it'll, that data and the experience alone will help inform that question. We're looking at the broader impact. We understand it's not just about banking. I work closely with Paul and Iosco and Morton, CPMI, Dietrich and the FSB. The leverage ratio, for example, does it impede central clearing? That's an issue that we're talking about these days. We have a G-SIB framework, Global Systemically Important Banks. What's the insurance angle? Are we covering all the insurance exposures of a group? We work with IAIS, looking at those kinds of issues. So we're looking at things outside the banking issue, but we're also looking at, and it's always useful to remind people, yeah, there are costs to regulation, we know that, but there are benefits. And that's the one part of the equation that we most often don't talk about, the cost and the benefits. The BIS and the Basel Committee, under Steve Chiketti's leadership back in 2010, published a long-term economic impact report where we did, we looked at the costs, we tried to estimate the cost of the new rules and the benefits. We're updating that work. We've got better data. I think, for example, one thing, we've got a, we've got better data on the cost of crises. So I think it's, the early indications are, the benefits still exceed the costs, but it is important to remind people of that. On all these new standards, we're also looking at, what are the incentives that arise for banks? How are they changing their behavior? How are they changing their strategies and business models? Are there opportunities for regulatory arbitrage? And if so, what's the best response? Probably not a regulatory one. That's costly and time inefficient to go down the regulatory route. Usually supervision is probably the better response. And there's been a couple of examples already where we saw examples of arbitrage. We published a statement to say, look, we see what's going on, we don't think it's a good idea. And that pretty much stopped a few things in their tracks. So that's another thing we're looking at. Just a quick word about some of the policy work that's going on. Market risk. For most countries around the world, banks exposures to market risk is single-digit, 5%. You know, at least according to the data, we have market risk exposures for most banks, 4%, 5%. On the other hand, for the banks that do have large market risk exposure, it's incredibly important. It's an incredible source of risk and losses, but it's also tremendously important for the proper functioning of markets. We'll finish this by the end of the year. There are a few very narrow things that we're looking at, the market risk rule that we published a couple of years ago. It was supposed to come into effect next year. We, as part of the Basel III package published in December, we decided to postpone until 2022. And that way, it comes into effect with all the other Basel reforms. We're still looking at sovereigns, sovereign exposures. We published a paper last December, we got a lot of feedback on that public paper. The Basel Committee will talk about it again later this year. Now, most people, when they think of the whole regulatory treatment of sovereign issues, most people think it's a very narrow issue. It's just about, how do you risk-weight holding a bank's government bonds? It's far more involved than that. There are definitional issues like what constitutes, you know, sub-government debt at the state level or municipals or provinces, public sector entities, multilateral development banks. So there's all these definitional issues, and there's quite a bit of variability around the world. So that's one area where we could, aside from risk weights, that we might be able to make some progress. Pillar two guidance, supervisory guidance, better disclosure, it's the pillar three angle. So again, we'll come back to that toward the end of this year. Finally, on fintech and cyber risk. I said in my opening remarks, the supervisory angle here is important. It's an important distinction, regulation versus supervision. And a lot of people just kind of think of them as synonymous with one another. I've been, just a kind of a silly anecdote, the banks and the trade associations have been pleading with us the last couple of years, you've done so much, just stop, you know, all these standards coming out of Basel, please, stop. Take a regulatory pause. And I say, well, we can't do that because we took a regulatory pause once, and that was in 2006, and that didn't work so well. So I said, okay, we'll call it something else, take a regulatory sabbatical. And I, so like, but in any event, just stop. I'm hearing much the same from the banks now. We need regulation. You've got to do something. There's such a, you know, competitive distortion with fintech, with tech firms jumping into this space. I could say with confidence, there's not going to be a regulatory response at the moment. You know, some people call it innovation, others call it disruption. I think a regulatory response at this point is not warranted, but from a supervisory perspective, we are very involved in this space, asking banks, how are you preparing for this massive shift in the operating environment? So it's more of a supervisory response right now. We are looking at things like innovation facilitators, machine learning, artificial intelligence, but there's not going to be, at the moment, it's not going to be a regulatory response. And finally, on cyber risk, similarly, there's an important supervisory role here to make sure, to share experiences, for one thing, that's what we do at the Basel Committee level. What are the right questions to ask banks? What are you as supervisors? What are you seeing? How are you instructing your banks? So really, just to share information, to share experience about bank preparedness and supervisory preparedness for cyber risk. We've got a group that's looking at these topics, these issues. We think of it in terms of operational resilience, and initially, there's a focus on cyber. It is a busy space. Everyone, no surprise, everyone is working on this. So we have to avoid overlaps, but we also have to avoid underlaps, the gaps. So I will leave it at that and pass the baton on to Jonathan.
Yes, let me now give the floor to Jonathan Dixon, also a first timer here, by the way, in his capacity of Secretary General of the International Association of Insurance Supervisors.
Yes, also a first timer, very, very nice to be here. And thank you very much for the opportunity to be here since taking over as Secretary General at the end of, end of last year. I do want to acknowledge my predecessor in the audience, Yoshi Kawai. And it's been a real privilege to build on the strong foundations that you built. So thank you very much. So on the themes of, oops, themes of fintech, cyber and implementation, but before getting into that, I thought it would be useful to take one minute to give an overall context of our current priorities, particularly as this year we set out on developing our next five-year strategy for the IIS. Unsurprisingly, these two themes of fintech, cyber, as well as implementation, feature highly in that future focus. But in addition to that, we are also looking at making sure we deliver and complete our contribution to the post-financial crisis reform agenda. We probably started a little later than on the bank side, but we are on track and will be delivering by the end of next year as planned. Firstly, on a common framework for the supervision of internationally active insurance groups, COMFREAM for short, including a global insurance capital standard, so the closest we get to Basel III, as well as the work that we're doing together with the FSB on the development of a holistic framework for the mitigation of systemic risk in the insurance sector. But that's the current work. And as I said, the real heavy lifting is preparing for the next agenda that's coming down the road, in particularly being alert to and responding to these new emerging areas, in fact, areas which are actually not, no longer emerging, they are emerged in fintech and cyber. And lastly, pivoting to an increased focus on the assessment of implementation and support for implementation amongst our members. So firstly, to fintech. Last year, we published what we called our foundational report on fintech developments in the insurance industry. It was really a scenario-based approach, which talked about and demonstrated the far-reaching impact that technology may have on the insurance business model, particularly under certain scenarios. It also talks about the fact that we can envisage that these innovations have the potential to deliver a wide range of benefits, including cost-cutting, better risk assessment, better customer experience, and importantly, financial inclusion. But it also points out and flags that some of these innovations could threaten the traditional model of insurance in unhelpful ways for policyholder protection, and could also expose the sector to even greater interconnection and cyber risks. So our aim going forward is really, in this rapidly evolving environment, to make sure that we maintain high levels of policyholder protection whilst at the same time, not stifling what's seen as socially useful innovation. And our future focus, and I echo the words of my colleagues in this area, is likely to be much less about setting new standards and more about focusing on supervisory practices, and effective proactive supervisory practices in this new environment. And this is an area where I would say we probably get the biggest demand from our member supervisors, in that fintech is an area that impacts not only developed jurisdictions, but also equally, perhaps even more so, developing jurisdictions as well. And I should flag the IIS as an association with over 200 members from 140 countries, two-thirds of which are from emerging markets. This is a key theme for us. It's also an area in which the cross-sectoral issues are key. These are, this doesn't impact just insurance, it's across, not only across the financial sector, but also outside the financial sector. So our approach is going to have to focus on how do we get coordination and cooperation between standard-setting bodies in the financial sector, also outside of the financial sector, avoiding duplication, but also avoiding underlap as well. And this is, I think, a challenge. In terms of the future supervisory guidance, I would say that actually, a lot of what we have coming down the track has a distinctly market conduct flavor to it as well, in that in this fintech space, issues around how digitalization might maybe impacting fair treatment of policyholders, and what it means for market conduct supervision, have been flagged as particular priorities, and you can see the future work that we're doing in that space. The last point I'd like to make on fintech and digitalization is that it is also very much forcing us to think about what does it mean for our model as a standard-setting body in responding to a fast-evolving space. And Paul, you've made reference to your fintech network of supervisors. We have, we call it our fintech forum. I'm not sure who came up with the idea first, but the idea is to have a forum of supervisory experts in this topic to help with a more agile, responsive approach to identifying and sharing experiences, lessons on effective supervisory practices, but also feeding that conversation into our work on looking at systemic risk and also improving supervisory practices, but potentially eventually standards as well, but not as a first start. On cyber risk, I think we have similar challenges. So our focus to date has been on So our focus to date has been on supervisory guidance on insurer cyber resilience, again, with more of a focus on supervisory practices than new standards. But this is also an area where likewise, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and we're trying as far as possible to make sure that we put our guidance whilst not, whilst building on what has been done by other standard-setting bodies and the FSB. But going forward, our focus probably will expand somewhat, in particular, as I said, looking as part of our activities-based approach to the monitoring and mitigation of systemic risk that we're developing, recognizing that cyber risk is one of the common exposures that could impact the sector, that we need to monitor and track and think about how we respond to. So that will be one new focus area. The other, and perhaps where is insurance different, is recognizing that on the flipside of the coin, insurers are not only exposed to cyber risk, but they're also cyber risk-takers as underwriters of cyber risk. And we need to think about what is the potential role of regulation and supervision in helping to develop a cyber insurance market in a way that could potentially help strengthen overall financial system resilience. And then lastly, in terms of the pivot towards implementation, this has always been an important strategic objective of the IIS, reflective of our broad membership, particularly over the last five or six years. Our focus so far has been very much around observance of our insurance core principles, being the body of standards that applies universally to all types of insurers in all And we've had a very rigorous program, resulting in over 1,000 individual assessment reports to date on our ICPs. But going forward, I think there's going to be an additional focus. Firstly, as we do complete our work on the insurance capital standard, ICS, next year, we will be moving into the next phase, a five-year monitoring period, in which we will be monitoring the implementation of ICS as something that is in the form of confidential reporting to group-wide supervisors. This is probably the closest we get to an RCAP type of an assessment, but doing it before it is implemented as a prescribed capital requirement to try and drive consistency of implementation even before the live date. And the second area where we're going to probably see a change is around more intensive assessment of implementation of the policy measures linked to our holistic framework for the mitigation of systemic risk. So a particular focus on macro-predential and financial stability policy measures going forward. So in conclusion, I think the themes are there. To reiterate, probably less about setting new standards, more about effective implementation of supervisory practices, a rebalance between the focus almost solely on the financial stability issues and more of a look at market development with a view to how it can contribute to long-term sustainable development. And lastly, how we work in this environment to be more agile and responsive as a standard-setting body. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jonathan. And the next speaker is Dietrich Tomasky, Secretary General of Financial Stability Board. And again, it's the first time that you come here, so welcome you as well to this roundtable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fernando, and good afternoon. And as you just mentioned, I complete the club of first timers on this panel, and it's a great pleasure to be here. I took over as Secretary General of the FSB in January this year from Swine Andres, who is also here in the audience, and I look very much forward to our discussion. Now, the chair has picked two excellent topics for this session, implementation and evaluation of reforms and fintech and cyber risk. And these are excellent topics, first, of course, because they are on the top of the mind of public authorities and the private sector alike. But these topics are also, I think, emblematic of the shift in focus, the transitions, if you like, in the work of international standard setters, and my colleagues have spoken about that, and the FSB is no exception in this regard. So what I would like to do in the next few minutes is to illustrate these transitions with a couple of concrete examples from the FSB's work this year and in the months ahead. So the first transition is from designing a new regulatory framework that fixes the fault lines revealed by the crisis, to evaluating the effects of those reforms once they have been implemented. Now, the objective of this evaluation is to assess if the reforms are operating as intended, and to make adjustments if needed, but without compromising on either the original objectives of reforms or the agreed levels of resilience. Now, evaluation is and should be an integral part of any effective policy process, and the FSB formalized this last year through its Framework for Post-Implementation Evaluation of G20 Financial Regulatory Reforms, which the G20 leaders endorsed at the Hamburg Summit. The framework provides the basis for rigorous evaluation and the dynamic implementation of reforms, thereby ensuring that these reforms remain fit for purpose amidst changing circumstances. Two evaluations are currently underway. The first one is an evaluation of the effects of the reforms on financial intermediation, with a particular focus this year on infrastructure finance. Infrastructure finance is a topic of interest for many countries around the world, not least many emerging markets, given its importance for sustained economic growth. The second evaluation looks at how regulatory reforms have affected the incentives for market participants to centrally clear OTC derivatives. This evaluation is taking place in coordination with the relevant standard-setting bodies, and in particular, the review of the effects of the leverage ratio and client clearing by the Basel Committee that Bill was already referring to. This evaluation is important because it tackles one of the key areas of post-crisis reform efforts. Those exercises will inform any possible decision about whether and how to adjust the relevant post-crisis standards. Now, today is unfortunately a bit too early to talk about results. The FSB plenary is meeting on Monday and will, at that meeting, discuss both evaluations, and we are planning to release interim reports for both evaluations for public consultation in July and August. What I can do, however, is to offer some observations on why these evaluations actually add value. Now, the FSB evaluation framework allows to take a holistic view of the effects of post-crisis reforms. For instance, taking the evaluation of incentives to clear derivatives centrally as an example, this evaluation sheds light on how different individual reforms with different objectives to strengthen capital and liquidity, to incentivize central clearing, interact with each other. And these evaluations also look at the financial system as a whole, in order to obtain a complete and nuanced picture of the effects of reforms on different parts of the financial system and their interaction. I think this holistic and cross-sectoral view is critical from a financial stability perspective. That said, I think it's important to recognize that producing high-quality evaluations also gives rise to challenges. To be credible, the evaluations should be based on good data, sound empirical methods, and cover both the social costs and benefits of the reforms. Now, this latter consideration is particularly important since the short-term costs of reforms to industry are typically easier to measure than the social benefits in terms of financial crisis avoided or reduced probability of financial crisis. Now, we know that the reforms were undertaken with a firm belief that the social benefits are much larger than the costs, given the huge damage that the great financial crisis had created. And the evaluations actually allow us now to test this assessment against the evidence to date. We would welcome any evidence-based input and feedback from all stakeholders on our evaluations, and as I mentioned, would publish consultations on both evaluations in the summer, and the final reports will be delivered to the Buenos Aires G20 Summit. Perhaps looking ahead, a third evaluation on which work will start soon is going to consider the effects of reforms on the financing of small and medium-sized enterprises. And then, in addition, the FSB has also agreed to evaluate the effects of the reforms aimed at ending too big to fail by 2020. Let me now turn to fintech as an example of the second transition, the transition from fixing the fault lines of the past crisis to assessing and addressing new emerging risks. Last year, the FSB identified three priorities for international collaboration on fintech. These are first, the need to manage operational risk from third-party service providers; second, the need to mitigate cyber risk; and third, the need to monitor macro-financial risks that could emerge as fintech activities grow in importance. Work is underway in all these areas, but let me perhaps focus on two specific topics, cyber risk and crypto assets. Well, we all know that cyber incidents have the potential to disrupt financial services that are crucial to both national and international financial systems, and can therefore endanger financial stability. Last year, the FSB published a stocktake on cybersecurity regulatory and supervisory practices. And this stocktake showed that all FSB members are increasingly active in regulation and supervision, and most members actually have been drawing on international standards and guidance, but with pretty wide differences in approaches. The stocktake also highlighted that further action is in the pipeline or underway in almost three-quarters of the jurisdictions participating to our survey. So there are opportunities to strengthen consistency of regulatory and supervisory approaches on an issue that is intrinsically cross-border in nature. New risks, including cyber, pose new challenges, obviously, for authorities and the private sector. And how to deal with these challenges, to give you one example, which may perhaps sound trivial, is the need for a common internationally-agreed terminology to ensure that communication on these risks, cyber risks, is effective and avoids inconsistencies and uncertainties. And what the FSB is doing in this regard is developing a common lexicon of cybersecurity terms, and we are going to publish this lexicon for consultation in a few weeks, and planning to finalize it for the Buenos Aires Summit. So this is meant to provide one element as a basis for dealing with cyber risks. Crypto assets, obviously a topic that attracts a lot of attention. The FSB chair noted that from a financial stability perspective, at this time, crypto assets do not pose a risk to financial stability, given that crypto assets remain a relatively small part of the overall financial system. Now, as we are seeing every day, the market continues to evolve very rapidly, and this initial assessment could actually change if crypto assets were to become more widely used or interconnected with the core of the regulated financial system. For example, a wider use of crypto assets and greater interconnectedness with the regulated system could, if it occurred without significant improvements in market conduct, market integrity, and cyber resilience, pose financial stability risks, including through confidence effects. To support the monitoring and timely identification of emerging financial stability risks, the FSB will discuss a framework to monitor developments in crypto assets markets, so that any emerging financial stability risks can quickly be identified. I should also note, by the way, of course, that crypto assets raise a whole host of other issues related to consumer and investor protection, illicit activity, use for money laundering, and so on and so forth. This is something that other standard setters and FATFA are looking into. Now, to conclude on our work on fintech, I think, taken together, our work in this area and the ongoing sharing of experiences on regulation and supervision of fintech across jurisdictions and sectors, and I think this is important because here we are in many cases talking about cross-sectoral issues. This sharing of experiences is helping authorities to understand emerging risks, but also, I should say, the benefits of these new technologies, and help them to find the right balance between managing risks and taking advantage of the opportunities. Now, let me perhaps conclude with a few observations on what this pivot in the work of the FSB that I've been talking about implies for emerging markets and developing economies. First, emerging markets have an important voice at the FSB table. Ten of our 24 member jurisdictions are emerging markets, and our regional consultative groups include more than 65 jurisdictions, reaching beyond the FSB membership to quite a few emerging markets and developing economies. Now, perhaps most importantly, the FSB's work involves engagement with emerging markets on issues in which they have a particular interest, and I think the decline in correspondent banking relationship is an issue where quite a few emerging markets have flat concerns and where the FSB is coordinating global action. The FSB is on track to deliver on a four-point action plan by the Buenos Aires Summit. This includes regular production of data and trends in correspondent banking, clarification of regulatory expectations, supporting domestic capacity building through technical assistance, and stronger tools for due diligence by banks. As part of this work, the FSB published in March a stocktake on remittance service providers' access to banking services. So remittance services is a closely related issue, as you know. And this report made 19 recommendations to address barriers in banking service, to banking services by remittance service providers, and we will report to the G20 in mid-2019 on progress in implementing these recommendations. Now, taken together, I think, the shifting focus of FSB work, the two transitions that I've been talking about, may well reinforce the engagement with emerging markets and developing economies. Understanding the effects of global financial reforms is of key importance, especially for economies with financial systems that are in the process of development and often highly dependent on cross-border funding. And new technologies offer the promise of boosting growth and fostering development, so the question of balancing the benefits and risks of technological innovation is often particularly acute in these economies. I'll stop you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dietrich. Okay, so next speaker is David Walker, Secretary General of International Association of Deposit Insurers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fernando, and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here, and I wanted to maybe begin by speaking a little bit about the International Association of Deposit Insurers and who we are and what we do. We're a relatively young standard-setting body, established in 2002 to contribute to the enhancement of deposit insurance system effectiveness by promoting guidance and international cooperation. We have about 170 members, associates, and partners, and we've grown very quickly. It's been a steady growth, but it's also been promoted as well, I guess, by an occasional financial crisis. Whenever there's a financial crisis, we often seem to have an increased interest in the importance of deposit insurance, and membership grows accordingly. Our key standard is we have the IATI Core Principles for Effective Deposit Insurance Systems. We first developed these in 2009, very much in coordination with the Basel Committee, and we revised them in 2014 based on lessons learned in the financial crisis. And they're currently used, involved with the IMF and the World Bank in FSAPs and FSB peer reviews. In terms of our three strategic priorities at IATI, the first one is promoting deposit insurance compliance with the Core Principles. So this fits very well with the topics in our presentations today about standard implementation. We also have as a second objective, advancing deposit insurance research and policy development. And one of the areas that we've been doing some work is financial inclusion and financial technology, particularly... technology, particularly digital stored value products and their use in a lot of deposit insurance systems. And I'll be speaking to that a little bit later. And thirdly, we provide technical assistance to our members, which is linked with our first priority of promoting compliance. We help our members find their gaps in their systems and then we try to tailor our training and technical assistance to help them, you know, address those gaps and improve. Our core principles, which, as I mentioned before, have been relatively recent addition to IATI, have been developed in conjunction with a lot of our international partners. I mentioned the Basel Committee, but also when we developed them, we worked with the IMF and the World Bank, the FSI, BIS and the FSB. And this has been because deposit insurance, we want to make sure is harmonized with the existing regulatory framework and the standards. And as well, because our deposit insurance members have very interesting mandates. Some of them are very, very narrow mandates. They just deal with financial institution failures and depositor payouts. Others have a wider remit. They have resolution activities as well. And so we have, as we like to look at it, we have, one of our members only has one person on their staff, yet we have other members that have 6,000 in our resolution authorities and do supervision. So these core principles have to be relatively flexible to take into account those types of mandates. And also, it's our challenge as an association how to help our members with compliance assessment and implementation. This is a bit of a report card on the membership. To date, about 30 of our members have done detailed self-assessments or they've been involved with FSAPs or various other types of reviews, including FSB peer reviews. So this helps us as a useful tool in determining where the gaps are in our members and our standards implementation framework. Generally speaking, the darker colors of green are good, compliant. A lighter color is good too, largely compliant, but we try to focus on those areas of orange and red where our membership seems to be having some of the most difficulties in meeting our standards. Probably for us, the most important standard we have is rapid payout within seven working days. And that is a challenge for a lot of our members to do that, particularly in emerging market economies. So we're focusing a lot on that. But we have other areas as well, cross-border work. There's been a growth in this area in deposit insurance systems, not just within the European context, but abroad as well. So improving those relationships and mechanisms is a focus, as well as other areas such as funding and resolution tools. About a third of our members have significant resolution powers in their systems and we work with them, including work on key attributes in terms of helping them out. So this is just a bit of a snapshot that shows our membership and some of their challenges that they have. Some of the things we're doing to help them is we have a standards assessment and technical assistance program. If members want to look at their own systems and find out what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, we are developing training teams that we can send out to them and help them do this. Some of them, if they are approaching an upcoming FSAP or review of their deposit insurance and resolution regime, we also try to help as well in those areas. And during the last year, we've done a lot of work on technical assistance workshops. We've tried to focus regionally where there may be errors or where there may be compliance issues and challenges, and we've focused these technical assistance workshops. And we've done about nine of them to date, and they've been quite effective with our members. In terms of research, one particular area that came out of the recent financial crisis was contingency planning and crisis management from a deposit insurer's perspective. But that also involved ways we can look to improve in coordination with deposit insurers and supervisors and regulators, particularly in crisis-type scenarios. But one area where we've also been working is in financial technology and financial inclusion, and that is in the digital deposit like stored value products. And what's interesting about this area is that in a lot of the world of fintech, the focus has been on payment systems and on the credit side, but in many developing countries, deposit products have not really been a feature people think about in fintech. But for many of our emerging market economies, most of the growth in deposit-taking is in stored value products and very small balances. And those balances in many systems need to be insured. And so this is a big challenge for our members in a fintech-type development that's a little bit different than maybe some of the other standard setters are looking at. So we've started off by trying to figure out what are the challenges here. We've recently done a survey of our membership and looked at some of those areas where they see challenges and areas where we're thinking about developing guidance. For instance, in this area, we have the issue of who can be members of deposit insurance systems. It's typically banks or bank-like entities, but we also have non-banks that are issuing stored value products or that are important intermediaries. And so where do they fit in this space? We have supervision and regulation of these particular non-banks. That's another issue. And also these digital stored value products. We have about, in the recent survey we did, about 20% of our members are actually insuring these types of products. And they do through some somewhat complex arrangements where there's a service provider or offer, but the electronic wallet is within a bank. So you have interesting types of risks that may occur in a failure in terms of prudential risks and management with the banking entity and then operational risks with the provider of the pass-throughs. So resolution issues are coming into play as well. And so these are all areas where our members are asking us to think about developing some type of guidance or international standards to help them ensure these new types of fintech-related products. In terms of the cyber risk area, this is relatively new for us, but we do have a new technical committee that's been created looking at risk management and internal controls. And that cyber risk is going to be looked at in that context and for guidance in the future. And with that, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much, David. Thank you very much, all speakers. I mean, it has been a great effort for all of you actually to summarize, really reach agendas in roughly 10 minutes, so I appreciate this effort. Let me now give the floor to the speakers, but before I do that, let me ask them, if you could actually sort of provide us with their ideas on two specific elements which are floating around the discussion, but have not been covered by all of them. One is about the distance between now and a situation in which we could actually identify the need actually to develop standards on the technology field. We see now that in some jurisdictions, some regulatory actions are already taken, the field of cyber resilience, the field of cryptocurrencies and other issues. But in principle, I think most of you seem to think that it's not yet the time actually to conduct some standard-setting work at international level, particularly just to be more specific about whether you see a likely scenario sometime in the future actually to be in a position to have to develop those regulatory standards following what is already happening in different jurisdictions. Cross-sectoral cooperation, I think it's clear that those technological developments are affecting in parallel different types of activities and potentially affecting in parallel different policy objectives, their conduct of business, consumer protection, financial stability, data protection, anti-fraud policies and all these things. So I wanted to ask you whether you feel that cross-sectoral cooperation, cooperation across the standard setters in particular is important. Second, what is your assessment about the current, currently existing procedures and arrangements to ensure that cross-sectoral cooperation? If you could cover those two issues, I would be grateful, as well as the others that have been raised by the audience. Why don't we start with Paul?
I think you pose some very challenging questions, I would say. And for us, I would say, on standards with respect to technology, definitely too early. But the question is when and how. And I don't know that I could sit here today and tell you in two years, we're going to know exactly where technology is going on the big picture. For us, I think it's going to be an issue-by-issue basis. So for example, it could be, and I don't know that we'll get there, but it could be that if we continue to see the proliferation of things like these innovation hubs, I could foresee a situation where IASCO would say, if you as an IASCO member want to develop an innovation hub, godspeed. That's your business to do. But so that we have a globally consistent approach to this, here are some basic standards or here are some basic guidance that you should be thinking about before or while you're implementing these new types of innovation technology approaches. So that's how I see us probably interacting with respect to standards vis-à-vis technology issues. I don't know that it will necessarily be a big bang approach. It's probably going to be incremental and issue by issue. So another area where potentially there could be a need for standards with respect to technology issues is when it comes to initial coin offerings. This is related, of course, to the discussion around cryptocurrencies, but for us, the focus is really on ICOs because initial coin offerings are what are most like securities, commodities, capital markets products. We don't regulate currencies. We don't have any desire to regulate currencies. And so while it's related, we have to be thinking about what are the products and the issues around ICOs. So what does that mean for technology standards? At this point, I don't know the answer to that, but what I think I do know is that as these products continue to grow, assuming they do, and they're going to continue to use the distributed ledger technology upon which they're based, I could foresee us coming up with potential guidelines or standards around these products, which necessarily has to incorporate standards around the technology. You can't really separate one from the other, at least insofar as an ICO is concerned. On the cross-sectoral cooperation, I think that we have the great benefit of working under the cooperative umbrella of the FSB when it comes to this particular issue around cybersecurity. All of us participate in one form or another with respect to the work that the FSB is coordinating on this, and I think that in and of itself helps ensure that we're talking to one another around these issues. I think that's probably where we're going to be in the short term and maybe in the medium term, but I think it's also incumbent upon us on a bilateral basis to do what's in the best interests of our particular areas of jurisdiction, like we did with CPMI, to come out with some specific guidance vis-à-vis financial market infrastructures. Leave it there.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul. Morton?
I agree with everything that Paul said. I just want to say that we already have some guidelines and standards, perhaps even on FMI's use of third-party service providers. And I think to the extent that FMIs are increasingly using cloud services and so on and so forth, I think it's somewhat already covered in some of our guidelines that you, it's ultimately your responsibility to make sure that whatever happens at the third-party service provider is appropriate. So to some extent, but otherwise, I don't see at this current juncture a need for new or desire for new standards.
Operation, Morton?
So we actually already on, in the digital innovations, we actually coordinate across all the standard-setting bodies via an ad hoc coordination group, and that has proven very effective in terms of information sharing. So we'll definitely continue that.
When it comes to fintech issues, cyber risk issues, I think it's important that each standard-setting body stays very close to, within its mandates. And that's, and I think that points to the importance of the FSB as a coordinating body to make sure that there are no gaps. But, so I mean, I can answer your question directly from a Basel Committee perspective. We, you know, we've got guidance from 2003. We called it, it was guidance on, back then we called it e-banking. Who calls it e-banking now? But that's the, that was the term back then. And we talked about things like appropriate governance and safeguarding customer data and the hazards associated with third-party vendors. And so there are implications for things beyond banking, its relationship with outside parties. And I think, you know, I think that's consistent with what the other standard-setting bodies are doing. But again, it's important that you have a body like the FSB to ensure that there are no, that there are no gaps. Fernando, I think that kind of gets to your question about cross-sector cooperation. I mean, there is, so there is the FSB that does play a useful role in ensuring cooperation. There's also, and people don't see this, I have an enormous amount of interaction with my colleagues on this panel and the members of our secretary do as well. So there's a lot of interactions, more so today than ever before. I like to tell people the story when I worked at the Fed Board many years ago and where my office was, right next to my office, there were people from, it was called Reserve Bank Operations, the payment systems people. And together, we peacefully coexisted, or more accurately, we were blissfully ignorant of what each other did. I had no idea what they did, they had no idea what I did, and there we, you know, we existed. Now, the amount of interaction I have with the payment systems people, Morton's staff, the members within the, and keep in mind, we've got, all the organizations that are on the Basel Committee, most of them are on the CPMI. It's just, it's a different set of people. So I think the coordination within organizations, certainly the cross-border, or sorry, the cross-sector cooperation, you know, among the standard-setting bodies here, it's vastly different today than it was back then. And Fernando, on your point about the need for standards, I mean, I made this distinction before, there are, from the Basel Committee, we produce minimum standards and at the national level, those get transposed into laws, regulations or rules. And that's a lengthy process, involves, it involves consultation, involves quantitative impact studies, and it's not always appropriate to have a regulation, from my perspective, a standard that ultimately becomes a regulation. And I think this is an important aspect of what the Basel Committee is doing, is we really are focusing more and more on supervision, which is far more, a far more efficient process. And that was, we are, after all, the Basel Committee on Bank, supervision, not regulation. And that's our raison d'etre, is to improve supervision worldwide. And now that Basel III is finished, we really are moving back toward that. Let me just, Andreas, you asked about, do we publish the R-CAP schedule? We do. Every year, we prepare a report to the G20 leaders, and I think the last report that we published last year, it had a schedule of those, of those exercises and what the schedule looks like for the next year or two. We do, these are enormously resource-intensive, time-intensive, so we do plan these things years in advance. Right now, we're finishing our reviews of the net stable funding ratio and we've just started the large exposure framework. Your other question, this is one of my favorite topics, simplicity. Simplicity, comparability and risk sensitivity. All the debate last year around trying to finish Basel III, the common refrain from many people, not just the banks, supervisors, and this is, it's really important, and that's the refrain of risk sensitivity. We have to maintain risk sensitivity, which I agree, but not at the expense, not by sacrificing comparability and simplicity. And so there is a trade-off there. So it's not just about one of those factors, it's about getting all three of those factors in balance. And we published a paper in 2013 about the need to strike that balance. What have we done about it? I think a lot of, what I mentioned before, the consolidation of the rules into one single, you know, accessible and more easily understood set of rules, I think that goes, will go a long way. But one of the hats I wear here in Basel is I chair the Policy Development Group, so all the work on liquidity and capital, the definition of capital, all the other technical groups comes through the PDG, and we are acutely aware of the need to make sure the rules are written in an understandable, digestible way. Are we always successful? Well, a lot of what we do, as you know, is, you know, we negotiate an end product and that sometimes stands in the way of simplicity, but we're aware of it. that sometimes stands in the way of simplicity, but we're aware of it. So those aspects of the Basel framework that have not yet been implemented, does that mean that they're still in play, or does that mean that there's less appetite to adopt them? I would put alongside the net stable funding ratio, the standardized approach for counterparty credit risk, there's equity investments in banks, there's exposure to CCP. So when I said before that, I think it is a slight, I think it is a cause for concern that there has been a deceleration in the adoption of the standards, but there are for different reasons. Complexity certainly is one, the point that Andreas raised. Bulging IT pipelines is another, both at the banks and the resource requirements that are strained at supervisory authorities, the rule-writing bodies. Do I detect a lack of appetite, you know, people asking the NSFR? Nah, we don't, I don't think we need it. No, and maybe you're referring to the US, because there was quite a bit of speculation about whether or not the US would adopt it. And just as an observation, I don't have, you know, any inside information I'm revealing, but just an observation, last year, when we published a kind of a tweak really to the NSFR, and this has to do with the arcane matter of derivative liabilities and how we treated it for purposes of the NSFR, I think that that was the one outstanding issue that kind of set the NSFR on a path, not just the US but for other organizations, set on a path that would be implemented. That was the one, really, one sole issue. So I have every confidence that the NSFR will be adopted in the US and the other, the other members of the Basel Committee. Just a word about the implementation date. Fernando, I'm conscious of how much time I'm taking, but let me go through this. On the implementation date, I think it's important to note, we now have 2022 as the start date for a lot of the standards that we produced, particularly those we published in December 2017, as well as the market risk rules. That's a deadline, that's not a start date. There are countries, like Canada comes to mind, that they publicly said that they expect to publish, they expect to adopt, to adopt the rules before 2022. We also have these phase-in arrangements. So if a country or jurisdiction wants to phase in the output floor from 2022, they can do it over five years. I've heard some countries say they're not going to take advantage of the phase-in, that they'll probably start even sooner than 2022, and some have even said they'll adopt a floor higher than 72.5%. So again, what Basel produces is a minimum requirement, and countries are free to adopt them sooner than Basel expects to, or at a more robust, in a more robust manner. And then finally, oh, right, on the gone-concerned capital and the point of non-viability, I mean, permanence is one of the principles that underpins a lot of what we've said in the definition of capital, both for, you know, all the definitions and the criteria that we've established, and these were established in 2010. So the notion of permanence is really a key feature of the definition of capital. And so when it comes to gone-concerned capital, and before we had TLAC, we had gone-concerned capital, tier two, we even called it as such, there is this element of permanent. So if a write-down is permanent, yeah, it's meant to be permanent. I will, I think I've covered everything. I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. Jonathan?
So I think a lot's been said, so I'll try and be brief, just on this, on the issue of cross-sectoral cooperation. Yes, I think there's a lot of very good formal structures and forums where this happens, but I think what we've been talking about as well amongst standard-setting bodies, it doesn't have to be formal structures, it's the informal, ongoing information exchange and cooperation is just as important. This question on data protection, I mean, this is a, this is potentially an example where it makes more sense on issues, including those outside of financial, outside of the financial stability realm, to perhaps have a more coordinated approach. Perhaps it makes more sense to have collective engagement with data protection agencies rather than each standard-setting body doing it. So I think it's a very acute question we have to think about around how we, how we can potentially coordinate on that. And then on the, on the distance to standards, I think our members have been quite clear that moving to standard setting is not the first stop for them. I think there's already a robust set of insurance supervisory standards in the revised ICPs that we're finalizing next year. It's more about how to apply those standards in an appropriate way in supervisory practices, and this is, this is going to be very much our focus. We're going to have to change our ways of doing things, our own capacity in building the supervisory expertise within the standard-setting body. This fintech forum for insurance supervisors should really be talking to the fintech network of the IASCO and also industry networks, thinking about the same questions. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jonathan. Ettrick, please.
Thank you. Fernando, on your first question, when are we going to see international standards and rules on fintech? I don't know. I think I would very much agree with Paul's view that what we may see is an issues-by-issues approach, and should perhaps add, also a risk-by-risk approach, and I think that would be consistent with the assessment of the different significance and immediacy of risks, for instance, related to crypto assets that the FSB shared with the G20 in March, or as I said, well, again, taking crypto assets as an example. Financial stability risks are not immediate, so the proper thing to do here is not necessarily from a financial stability angle, to think about regulation that would make sense from a macro-potential perspective, but to make sure that we have a framework in place for monitoring financial stability risks and take action once we see evidence of actual financial stability risks emerging. There are more pressing issues concerning cyber assets related to consumer protection, make-market integrity and the money laundering, and there, given this greater immediacy of risk, I would expect international action to happen sooner, and this is actually what the G20 asked for in their March, March communique. Now, one point to note is that while many fintech issues are by their very nature global, I think one should not forget that a lot of work needs to be done at the national level in order to prepare the ground for at some future point, international standards to be implementable. And just to give you one example, I think there is a need to obtain clarity across jurisdictions on how ICOs or crypto assets are actually dealt with within existing legal frameworks, within each jurisdiction, and I think there is by far not everywhere clarity about that. Here, I just want to say, we were very conscious in avoiding the term currency, cryptocurrency, in order not to create a perception that we are talking about instruments that perform in a reasonable way the functions of money. So I think this is perhaps one example where terminology is very important in order to, not just to guide expectations and perhaps also in the context of regulatory measures. Now, on the second question, cross-sectoral cooperation, there, thank you for colleagues mentioning and emphasizing the coordinating role that the FSB plays. We are happy to play this role going forward in the fintech space. Now, what does coordination concretely mean? I think in the first step, it means analyzing, understanding the nature of technological developments and the associated risks, and then identify as a prophet who is best placed to take work forward in, on specific issues and specific areas. And I think here, one should perhaps distinguish two aspects. One is the third-party service provision to financial entities by non-financial service providers, cloud computing and so on and so forth. And I think here, that one main focus is to make sure that financial institutions have the proper governance arrangements and risk management frameworks in place to manage risks, issues that are associated with outsourcing of tech services. A second area is tech fin, the venturing of large tech companies into the provision of financial services, and I think here essentially, we are talking about questions of the regulatory perimeter. I think I'll stop here. Thank you.
Good, thank you. David, please.
There is one area where we've been, we've been asked to look into this by some of our members, and that is with the digital stored value products, because the electronic wallet may be with a bank, and there is a depositor out there using a phone, but there's some type of technology intermediary in between the two of them. And we have found in some of our jurisdictions, there are no standards at all, there are different systems, and this could create a lot of complexities and a failure to do a rapid payout. So this is one area that, you know, we've been looking into. On the cross-sectoral cooperation, I echo the same as my other colleagues, we work very closely with our other standard-setting bodies, and particularly FSB on fintech and resolution-related areas. We, I did have a question from a gentleman about entities that have 100% government-guaranteed deposits, should they be part of a deposit insurance system? Most of our guidance says, yes, they should be, for a number of reasons, but probably the major ones are that to make sure that they are subject to the same supervisory and regulatory standards as those entities that don't receive that full guarantee, and also if there are plans in the future to transition away from those 100% guarantees, if they're already within the systems, this can be very helpful in a transitioning framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Morton, if you have something to add?
The CPMI, together with what's known as the Markets Committee, had the BAS earlier this year, published a report on exactly central bank digital currency, which discusses a lot of the policy issues and technical issues around potentially implementing central bank digital currency. So I would refer you to that. And probably just note that the two countries, or two of the countries that are furthest ahead in their thinking is the Riksbank in Sweden, and then actually the Central Bank of Uruguay, who have just finished a pilot project on what they call the E-Pesos. But they come at it from very different perspectives. In Sweden, it's because, as I mentioned earlier, cash is disappearing. In Uruguay, they just think cash is too expensive and too dirty to deal with, so they would like to move to a digital. So I think there's different drivers of potential movement towards a digital currency.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a challenging environment. Low interest rates, so net interest margins are extremely squeezed in many jurisdictions. Competitive banking systems, some say even overbanked systems, reduces banks' ability to raise fees. Asset quality issues, always asset quality issues, new standards. Yes, the competitive threat of fintech, disruptive technology or innovative technology, however you want to refer to it, yeah, this, it's an incredibly challenging environment. Now, I do note that, you know, post-crisis, most banks have made great strides in improving their efficiency by cutting costs, not everywhere though. So some banks in some jurisdictions have still quite a bit to do when it comes to improving their efficiency, and that's on, that's on them, that's got nothing to do with regulation. And then, you know, this, one of the real benefits of having Basel III finished, it's not only, it was a major distraction for everyone. Now banks can get back to real business of banking, governance, risk management, improving their, their, their models, how they, how well are they placed to deal with the fintech threat? And these are the kinds of, I mean, for us, these are the kinds of things we point out. We published a paper in February that talked about, look, there are different ways you can approach this as a bank, the fintech challenge. Which of these five models that we published, which of these fit your, fit your needs? Now, so the way you expressed the question, won't there be some push, some appetite to revisit the standards? And I always come back to the same point, we produce minimum standards. I think the better question is, because of, yeah, the policy, there'll be, there'll be another crisis, we know that. We don't know when, we don't know what the trigger will be, but we know that there'll be a recession, there'll be a financial crisis somewhere. So a lot of people ask, well, a 3% leverage ratio, and that's hopelessly low. And the minimum requirements are minimum requirements, and most banks, all the G-SIBs, the globally systematically important banks, they don't meet, they don't adhere to the minimum standard, they're easily above, the market requires more. So I think a lot of people are asking, have we gone too far? But I think people are sensibly asking, have we gone far enough? Should we have gone a little bit further? And all the, all the assessment, evaluation, monitoring work that we're doing, along with the macro costs and benefits, I think that's, those are the kinds of questions we're trying to answer. But the last thing I'll say here, Fernando, I have the benefit, sitting here in Basel, I have the benefit of thinking long-term. I don't have, you know, I don't work for a bank, I don't have a board of directors and shareholders. At the supervisory level, I don't have to deal, I deal with politicians all the time, more so than we ever did, and I've been here for 20 years. In the last couple of years, my engagement with the European Parliament and Congress, just to name a few, is like, like nothing we've ever done before, and it's an important and necessary part of the process. But at least, I think that's the benefit also, we're not, we're not, we're not shackled by that, by that myopia. We can take the long-term view, and that's exactly what regulations do, they're meant to be in place over the long term to help ensure financial stability. So you can, I guess that's the last thing I'd like to say, remember, try to, try to think long-term.
Very good, thank you, thank you very much. I think it's time now to adjourn this session. I think we have had a very rich exchange of views on very relevant issues. We talk about the new issues, basically the new risks associated to technological developments, which of course are going to keep them, keep us busy actually for, for the months and years to come, but also we have talked about the old sources of risks, the ones which are addressed by the regulatory reform, and we have discussed the importance, obviously, of ensuring a timely and effective implementation of those reforms. So thank you very much to the speakers for a very good presentation, thank you very much to the audience, and I wish you a very fruitful and pleasant weekend in Basel. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1793.91][1793.91]